Councilwoman Ogletree, I see Mike Valentine and Jeff Peterson. Hi Jeff.
Hello Les, how are you sir?
I'm good, thank you sir. How are you this evening?
Anthony and Les, you guys have to turn on your, uh, your video, I mean your, uh...
I did several, I did several times.
Okay, can't see it. Well, let's go ahead and, uh, let's go ahead and get started, guys. Alright, today is March the 30th, the time is now 5:00 PM, the year is 2020. Special Work Session, the City Council, City of Trinidad, not coming to order. Before we get started, uh, Mike thought it would be a good idea to give a little bit of information on the stimulus package. So I'm gonna turn it over here shortly to Mike. Uh, I, I listened to one on Friday. I also listened to part of one today with Cory Gardner. And he was talking about the stimulus package as to how it would, uh, he could possibly help the Trinidad area. So Mike, why don't you go ahead and fill us in?
Sure, Mayor, thank you. Um, in your emails, you should have also, uh, got a pretty good informed, uh, alert from Councilwoman Griegego. It kinda breaks it down. Uh, Senator Gardner was raised enough together with Action 22, uh, folks, and, uh, and just gave us a briefing of, of where everything stands. As it relates to the states and the cities and the counties, there was a lot of questions to action 22 members. Um, how it breaks down was kind of odd. They have 116 billion, billion for the states, and each state is going to get 1.25 billion. And I gotta get clarification because, um, the rest of it seems all through the District of Columbia, um, we're gonna clarify that. But out of the 1.25 billion, there are four, um...
I'm trying, but I'm making...
We need to, please mute, Terry. Anyway, um, there's cities and, uh, counties of 500,000 or more that can apply to the federal government for a part of that 1.25 billion. That is, Rattlehome, Douglas, Jefferson, and Denver Counties will apply for a portion of that 1.25 billion. After that, there's, uh, 55% of that revenue goes to the state and 45% goes to the rest of the cities. Uh, CML is working on, on how, how that gets, CML and CCI and how that gets, uh, distributed, but, um, I think through Action 22, we're gonna have to appeal to the state and the governor for how that gets, uh, spread out to all of us. So, uh, expect, uh, something from Action 22 so then we can, um, you know, get our fair share, whether it's based on population, area, I'm, I'm not sure. It's all moving target. Um, and, uh, of course, there's, there's a question of how this fits all in, uh, under the taper cap, the whether this is recorded also. So, um, that was basically the issue Senator Gardner. Um, you know, to break it down, uh, to each individual, uh, you know, payments, there's gonna be, uh, $1,200 to each individual, $2,400 to...
No?
$500 to, um, or children under 17.
Muted.
Oh.
I'm muted.
You're on the line mute, uh, your, your phone or mute, your, uh, unless you're ready to speak, thank you. Um, and then there's small business, uh, loans, there, there's, there's a lot. We're trying to keep up on it and we wanna get out to, um, to our businesses, to our communities. Um, I don't know, Mayor, if there's anything else that you heard?
No, that was, that was pretty much it. Uh, you know, I listened to it for about 30 minutes and, uh, you picked up a little bit more than I did after I, uh, after I left. So, um, I guess we just, uh, I guess we're just gonna have to call, uh, Action 22, uh, ask Sarah Blackress for more additional clarification. There was something that was, that was kinda crazy that you, both you and I were questioning. Uh, they were saying we're supposed, Colorado gets 150 billion, but somehow or other, they're taking 25 billion off, right off the top and sending it back to Washington DC, from what I gathered. I'm not sure what that's all about. So we're gonna have to get some clarification on that. I just couldn't quite understand. Could you, Mike?
No, I didn't get it. 150 billion total for all, all the states. 1.25 billion for each state, but then, like you said, 25 billion goes back to, uh, District of Columbia, so I, that one, we'll have to follow along.
Yeah, I, that, I couldn't understand that at all. Okay. Well, we'll get some more clarification on it. We'll talk to Sarah a little bit more, uh, maybe starting tomorrow, get some additional information and maybe she can either hook us up with somebody who knows a little bit more information or, I'm not sure where we'll go with it, but we'll try to find it out, find out what's going on.
Can I just mention something?
Sure.
Before we go?
Go right ahead.
That email that Mike's talking about, if you go on to the very bottom of the email, it said the bill can be read in full if you click here and that's a link. If you hit that link, it goes directly to the actual bill.
Okay, let's go ahead and get on, get started with our regular work session item, which was, uh, discussion of marijuana sales tax for those impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. And, uh, something that, uh, I'll let Mike bring this up to date a little bit, but a couple of things that, uh, just wanted to run by you. Uh, everybody, I, I hope everyone read, uh, the information that, uh, staff presented and, uh, wanted to mention a couple of things, uh, of, of concern to us. We have to be very careful of. One is, uh, we may have people that are currently receiving public assistance, whether welfare, uh, maybe people that are, uh, on, uh, you know, getting social security, uh, people that were already getting, let's say, some assistance because they were laid off from a job prior to, let's say, this month. These are all considerations that I think we're going to have to, uh, remember, uh, because we don't want, because those people, uh, should be paying their, their bill regardless. Uh, the other thing that I had mentioned once before was that I think that anybody that was in arrears prior to this point in time, that they should also not be eligible because they're going to be the first ones in line to try to take advantage of, uh, of the money. So, uh, just keep that in mind as we go through our discussion today. So let's start with Mr. Matei to see if you have any thoughts on, uh, you know, the process that, uh, was laid out. I guess maybe the best, best thing to do is to start with what their recommendation was. Let me get through this, hold on a minute. The first item on there was the Mont San Rafael, was the Mont San Rafael Hospital, $65,000. Uh, it covers two months utility bills. Uh, give me some thoughts, Mr. Matei.
Uh, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good. Well, uh, first of all, credit to whoever's responsible. My team of staff that we, we put in this document together, it's, it's pretty comprehensive. I like the idea that it approaches in tiers, not crying tears, but levels. And more importantly, that it, it speaks to those, a progressive way to offer as much help as we can. One of the only things that the city has to offer, or one of the few things I think that the city has to offer, is financial resource. And to do this, I think the focal point of this entire pandemic will be medical system. And it seems appropriate to give a fair amount of that to the hospital as well in Level 1, uh, followed thereafter by council and government because I believe from my involvement, there's a danger to such very needy people through the course of their work in the AAA program and, and all the things that they offer to people who are probably the most vulnerable. So I think this is a great way to start.
Okay. Karen?
Yes, sir. Well, I echo Mr. Matei's sentiments about, and I mentioned it to Mike when I, um, responded back to him when we got this documentation. Um, the only comment I have, and I gave, I gave some suggestions to Mike over the weekend via email, but on Tier 2, when we're talking about businesses, I think maybe he, and I'm somewhat reluctant...
Hey Karen, before we, let's go ahead and take the, we're gonna take them one at a time.
Okay, fine.
Just go and talk about that Tier 1 with the hospital, if you have any questions on the hospital.
No, we're going by tiers?
Yeah.
I have no, I, that information that Mr. Tucker gave Mike uh, over the last couple of days is pretty self-explanatory.
Okay. Uh, Frank, are you on, uh, the phone at least?
Yes, I am.
Frank, do you have any comment on, uh, that, uh, Tier 1 proposal for the hospital?
Uh, no, I talked to Mike earlier.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Ogletree?
You're muted, Councilwoman Ogletree. Sorry.
No, I'm sorry. No, I don't have any, um, concerns about that.
Okay, Mr.
I, I read through what the hospital provided and it seemed reasonable.
Okay, uh, Mr. Goodall?
No, I'm good with the Tier 1. The one thing that, and I bring it up to Mike and I'll express to the rest of y'all is, we definitely needed to keep a good tracking of all this money that we are spent because of Trump, uh, or the governor's request adds us to that list where we're eligible for FEMA money, this is money that we need to recoup back. So I just need to make sure we keep a good tracking of the money in case of possible reimbursement.
Uh, I had talked to, uh, the county, uh, emergency manager here last week uh, when that question came up, and, uh, she didn't think that we would be able to get reimbursement. You never know. We'll see what happens. But just, uh, that was something that I, that she had told me. Uh, Mr. Williamson? Mr. Williamson, can you hear? Can you hear? I think he needs to unmute.
I apologize, my, uh, the speaker went out and then, um, I had a couple problems. I have no comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, just to let you know, I did have a conversation, of course. Uh, John Tucker did explain the shortfall that they may be facing, uh, you know, coming forward. Uh, I talked to him last Saturday, actually. And, uh, I guess the, the hospital is prepared to take up to like a million dollar hit on, uh, I guess, because of some of their, their revenue that they would normally be receiving. Uh, although I'm not sure, in the conversation that we, we heard from Cory Gardner today, uh, there's a concentration with the hospitals that they may be able to get some reimbursement. What, did you hear that correct, Mike? Go ahead and unmute.
You're muted, Mike. You're muted. Sorry.
Mike?
Okay, there was, there was a concentration of the PPE material that they were going to try to get because all the rural hospitals and communities, health departments are not getting the PPE needed, uh, personal protective equipment. So, um, I don't know about funding, but, uh, that was, uh, they did have a cache of, uh, PPEs for communities.
Okay. Uh, and in this morning's, uh, information that we usually get on at 10 o'clock every day, uh, there was a piece of equipment, and I was trying to get ahold of Mandy at the hospital. Uh, they were trying to get a, uh, some kind of a light. I'm not sure if it's a black light or, I'm not sure, uh, to try to, where they could take their PPE equipment and run it through this, uh, ultraviolet light is what it is, so that it could be reused. So I was trying to get ahold of her, but she never called me back. I didn't know if they had a source for that and what the cost of that would be. Uh, but regardless, like I said, we're, we're looking at this money here for them on that Tier 1 section. Uh, I guess it just, uh, that was one of the things that I, the first things that I had thought of is trying to maybe help the hospital out. So it sounds like everybody's pretty well in agreement that, uh, this, uh, $65,000 to help the hospital, uh, which would cover two months of utility bills. And of course, I guess we could discuss with them if that would be the best use for that money for them. So let's go ahead and, um, go on to the second item here, which is the Council of Government's program. Uh, that's 25,000 that could be used to offset added costs incurred for staffing and transit to deliver meals on wheels and care and share food boxes to all parts of the county. They're also adding several new early, uh, morning bus routes to Walmart and Safeway for seniors to shop and are waiving any cash payments normally required for riders. And the reason why I'm reading this is, uh, Tom Murphy is here recording this as well so that, uh, it'll go out on YouTube and I guess Channel 71, is that correct?
Uh, just YouTube, right.
Yeah, on just YouTube. So, Mr. Matei, give us, uh, some thoughts. Unmute.
Okay, I, I was working on it.
Okay, alright.
Quite as responsive as I would like it to be, but anyway. Early on, when we thought about how or what the city was going to do to assist as, uh, the city's representative, CAG, and understanding and knowing about the things that CAG does and having been apprised by Mr. Bolden Waltz as to some of the, the problems CAG is having, about the many groups that provide services within the county, and there are many, and everyone has well intentioned and does a great job. But CAG is an outreach program generally for homebound people who live in isolation or in a great deal of poverty, quite honestly. And I think that it would be the second most significant impact that we could make with the financial resources that we have to reach out to people who are truly in need. The first, of course, as we've discussed, being medical assistance. And then thereafter, livelihood and, and life and sustenance in the form of, of food and assistance with everyday living. A lot of these people have, uh, need help with their medication and that sort of thing. And CAG works with a, uh, there's probably 200 or so employees, generally speaking, and some of whom are family, who work in kind of a sense to, to render, to, um, uh, help those folks that, that are in need. And it's where the pigment, it's, the tire hits a pavement, I think. So I think any amount that we could give them, and this is a fair amount in my opinion to start with, would be very helpful. Mr. Bolden and, and the ladies who provide the, the services for program management can give you far better information than I can.
Okay. Karen, you're next.
I have no issues with this one either. I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Uh, Frank? Frank, were you able to, uh, to, uh, read that, uh, Council of Government Program Assistance? I might have lost him. Uh, let's go on to Ms. Ogletree.
I have no concerns. I think it's a good idea.
Okay, Mr. Goodall?
No concerns at all. Great ideal. Great job, staff, the way this is, uh, set up.
Okay, Mr. Williamson?
Uh, no, no concerns. Agreed with the rescue.
Okay. Alright, let's go on to the Los Angeles County Health Department Emergency Management. Uh, we're looking at $10,000 for providing, uh, for use and provided needs as required during the pandemic, which, uh, I'm not sure what their, so I'm not sure, any, any questions, uh, Mr. Matei? None?
Did I just... Okay, I, I, I'm hoping that that's a fair amount to help their needs. I'm not sure, is that any question? Was there a lifetime or, okay, I, I, I have any problem, but I hope that that's a fair amount to address their needs.
Okay. Karen?
No, I think that's, that's great.
Uh, Frank, did you, uh, did you hear that? Ms. Ogletree?
I, I think it's a good thing to help them. They're, they're bearing the brunt of getting the information out and, and staying on top of everything that's going on in our county. So yes, I think they deserve that support.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Goodall?
No, I have no issues with that.
Okay, Mr. Williamson?
No issues.
Okay. Okay, let's go on to the, uh, the Tier 3, which is $300,000. This would be to support, uh, locally owned businesses in amounts ranging from $500 to $1,500 based on set criteria. We are proposing the following three categories of business affected. Item 1 is a shutdown, those businesses that were shut down by executive order, including but not limited to bars, theaters, restaurants unable to retool for takeout operation, gymnasiums, hair or nail salons, spots, tattoo or massage parlors. Item 2 on there is a partial shutdown, uh, shutdown for operational, would take out service. Some restaurants seem to be doing better than others, they would take out service. Item number 3 is voluntary shutdown, those businesses who have shut down voluntarily uh, because it was more economically feasible to do so, uh, than trying to operate. Now, there is a question here in my mind on that particular one. And Mike, uh, you might, uh, wanna tie, you know, tie in with this. In listening to, uh, Cory Gardner today, of course, we won't know until we, uh, we get more information. Money that's going to be available in, in the, uh, in the, available to them in loans, uh, and they're talking like about 4% uh, rate of interest for these loans. So I don't know if that's something that we need to, uh, or do we wanna do this on the front end, the back end for these people that may be applying? So, uh, we'll get some comment there, but, uh, let's go ahead and get started. Mike, do you have anything besides, before we get started?
No, um, Mayor, I, I would just tag on to that, that, uh, as we receive applications, if, if we go through with this process, we'll have to identify that. Um, stimulus bill was ever changing in, in this whole thing and the executive was forever changing. So what we came up with was best fit, um, and our intent through all this is to help as quickly as we can upfront while we wait for this stimulus package to kick in. So, uh, those, that last category, uh, we will, you know, set those, uh, those applications based on, on what we see.
Mr. Matei?
Is this money to be spent, offered to the businesses instead of compensation for utilities that are over and above it in addition to?
Mike can answer that.
Yeah, so, uh, again, I want, before we go on, I wanna give kudos to staff, Audrey, Cheryl, Les, Wally, Donna, we're all involved in this. We tried to think of everything, uh, we tried to think of those businesses that were shut down, uh, but do not pay, uh, utility bills, they pay, they pay rent. So, um, the best way for the city to, to help people out is through utilities because we have that option. But if the business does not pay utilities, then, then there's a rental assistance uh, option for them to pick on the application. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I think if you're saying it could be either or. Either these, or, or other needs as they see fit. Okay, that, that's fine. I, I support that. I, I recognize that.
Karen?
I, I just, sometimes if I make, sometimes I just wonder just, if I had a business, and I'm gonna be shut down for two or three months, or however long, two months, let's say, and, and I've had to discharge a number of employees or whatever, and I'm getting a, a stipend of $500, how much of an impact is that truly gonna make to that person? And I realize it's better than nothing. Don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I don't mean to poo-poo our office, but at the same time, I, I, I just want it to be something meaningful to think and use. Now, this tier accounts for $300,000, that's 60% of what we have available, as perhaps it should be. I, I don't, I don't wanna to minimize that, but I, I just want it to be somewhat meaningful what we're trying to do and that we were just, uh, being helpful.
Okay.
And that, that is the intent, um, uh, we want these businesses, as a matter of fact, uh, not just, you know, we wanna help them out the best we can and we want them to, uh, be viable when they come out the other end of this, so, yes.
Good point. Okay.
Okay. Karen?
When I'm, when I'm looking at this Tier 2 and I'm thinking about restaurants, you can't really group those, the restaurants all together. You know, the big, uh, franchise restaurants, even though they're impacted, they're not as impacted as, um, bricks would be because in a, a food service like that, a lot of your profit comes from liquor sales. So, you know, I, I don't know if that's putting one more step in there that staff doesn't wanna deal with, but it's something we need to think about. Um, such as, businesses such as Mr. Downs and my business are impacted, but not anywhere. We, I can still operate, I'm still getting revenue, uh, even without having my doors open, but it's the people that depend on, uh, walk-in traffic that I'm concerned about. And, you know, when we talk about, uh, helping small businesses, but the public is going to have to understand is that we can only give according to our needs. You know, if we give over what we, we can afford, it does nobody any good if the city of Trinidad then doesn't have the, the money to continue operating as we have done in the past. And I think we need, when we start issuing wage checks or start publicizing this, that we have to make people understand, this is a bridge from no assistance to federal and state assistance. So it's just something, you know, I know it's not gonna make a, a huge impact on businesses, but I think, you know, I'm sure all of us that have been in council have heard, well, what is the marijuana business doing for me? I mean, I don't see anything that they're doing that, that is beneficial to my business. Well, this is a stunning example of what the marijuana money is going to do for, for businesses and individuals in Trinidad.
I agree. I agree. Uh, Mike?
Les?
The other, the one thing I was gonna ask you is, uh, do we want to, let's say, put a deadline on, for these applications rather than, uh, going ahead and letting them all trickle in one at a time? Because if you let them trickle in, uh, there may be some more needs, uh, you know, as the time goes along, rather than setting a deadline of X date? So that way you guys can look at all the applications?
Yes, correct. Uh, several things from your comment and, and Councilwoman Griegego's comments. Um, we, we did, we do wanna have a deadline in here for the first, first phase and, and we wanna help as quickly as possible so that, um, and there's an application process. We're, we're not just gonna have somebody come to the door saying, "We need money, we have a business." They have to put forth the effort, fill out the application. And then at the, at the bottom of the first page of the application, um, we put this in there, um, uh, thanks to Wally, I think. We, we ask, "Please apply with integrity and respect the spirit of these requirements" so that, um, you know, the, the restaurants that are making it, that have drive-throughs, that do drive-through service, um, and, you know, we, anybody can apply, but we, we really want the people that need it. Um, we're relying on the humanity here of everyone during this time, so. Um, and yes, Mayor, there will be a deadline, um, or I thought we put it in there. Anybody on the line? We wanna turn this around quickly. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead.
Right now, I believe that we had it, that we didn't have a strict deadline. We were, we put it there that people that apply before April 10th. would have a priority, um, to get this under the thought that we're not exactly positive how long this is gonna last. And so there might be the possibility that people have to apply again in the future. Um, and then on another note of all that, we did, and this can be changed, uh, we did put in there that only locally owned independent businesses can apply for this money as a way of keeping things like the best food companies from being able to apply for it as well.
Uh, very, very good thought, very good thought.
Thanks, Wally.
Yeah, uh, let me think. There was something else. Oh, are there any businesses that we are going to, um, prohibit? You know, Karen brought up a good, a point, like her, her type of business, the, uh, uh, insurance businesses, uh, attorneys, um, I'm not sure what other types of businesses where we would not allow to, uh, take an application from?
So staff struggled with that, um, and that's why we added that, uh, apply with integrity and, and respect for the spirit of the, of the, the process and the requirements. Um, yeah, we, we thought about those people that are still going. They're impacted, but, you know, they, I don't think we can just say, no, but in the vetting process, they, they'll have to have a very good, reason why we would fund them.
Okay.
And there will be a voluntary opt-out, I mean, for businesses who, who don't wanna do that. We, we didn't wanna be accused of specifically excluding types of businesses or individual businesses, but hopefully people will, uh, widely decide to opt-out of that if they're not.
Okay.
I'm sorry for interrupting.
That, that, that's, that's quite all right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There is a, I, I printed out the applications today and there is a deadline for April tenth.
Okay, I'll look that up.
Business assistance.
Yeah, I don't show it on mine 'cause I have the business assistance application. I don't show a, a deadline date, but, uh, that's okay. That's all right.
Uh, Mayor, you left, uh,
Towards third, yeah.
Through the fourth third up there. Thank you.
As long as it's there, that's all that matters. Okay, Ms. Ogletree.
Um, I, uh, first of all, I wanted to just quickly thank Wally, uh, Wallace and Andrew Schneider for putting together the, uh, the survey that went out and I believe they've gotten about a hundred responses. And they provided to us, uh, a con, an aggregate of the responses they got back from our local businesses. And it was very moving, um, and very educational to me to read through what everyone is dealing with. And, and so, yes, I think it's appropriate that we're providing direct assistance to businesses that are facing existen- existential threats. Um, I, so I, I just wanted to recognize that both of those gentlemen, I'm sure staff worked very hard to put that together and it's very helpful. And also, as I understand, it went to the governor over the weekend so that he can understand what's going on in our community better. And that's very helpful. There are things happening at the state level, um, some grants that the, um, Colorado Creative Industries have put together that will go to the local creative district, which can then re-grant out. So that's another, uh, place that money can come from. Um, I, and other than that, I just had a couple of questions. I wasn't really clear about, um, how does the five hundred to fifteen hundred dollar work based on the,
What?
Five hundred, one thousand, fifteen hundred or backwards of that, or how does that work?
Yeah, so, uh, we gave a range in there, um, because some businesses, utilities, uh, that was based kinda on the utility thought and the rental thought, uh, you know, we wouldn't wanna give fifteen hundred dollars to a business that only pays two hundred dollars in utilities or rent. So it's going to be quite the, um, vetting process to, um, to come up with that, but we, we felt like we had to give a range and not just an amount.
And? Mike, do you feel like, excuse me, Mike, do you have any of what discretion they have to make these, uh, awards or grants or do they need more direction about that? Are you good with that?
Um, well, it's, it, it's a hard call. Uh, this is, this has been a tough process to try and figure out how to hand out the monetarily, but, um, I think, uh, based on everyone's experience and the applications, I think we'll be able to, uh, figure out the best path forward.
Okay. The other thought that I had is that, um, yes, this is just one small drop in a bucket and as, uh, a good person I know says, it's better than a sharp stick in the eye for sure. But what's really gonna be valuable, I think, in this is if we can be part of providing assistance to help them understand where other money comes from and how they can get it, whether it's an SBA loan or a grant from a, some state agency. And so if there's anything we can put at least on our website that gives people, go here for this, go here for that, I, I think that would be a helpful thing because I think if I were in this situation, I would be frantic and looking for help wherever I could get it. And just some clarity would be really good if we could provide it.
Hey, Wally?
Also, the point person at the city that they're gonna be able to talk, talk with about our particular.
In there, Wally could add to it. Um, what we're doing now is we, we've got a list of, uh, two hundred and seventy-six, uh, licensed businesses in the city of Trinidad. We've got staff, uh, who are working from home, calling each and every business, trying to get an email address. Wally's gonna add that to, um, his mailing list and, and get this information out as he receives it and, um, the whole survey that Wally did, uh, very appreciative. It gave us quite the insight, um, but we're trying to reach every business that has a license in Trinidad and also will advertise, um, but, uh, Wally, I don't know if you have anything to add there?
Um, yeah, I will add that we, yeah, and mainly we've been using it to get information outside of our own social media, mainly because our website has the restrictions by the Justice Department, but, uh, we, in a distance to that, we have also, uh, I've been working with Jeff Peterson of the Center for, uh, Community Innovation. And we have created a small business resources website that I could pour onto after this meeting that that has had basically all, all of the resource banks, um, the SBDC, um, and also the Help Colorado Fund, et cetera, um.
Wonderful.
Make sure that that is added to the top scroll and clicker on the Trinidad, uh, homepage. And try and get connected to that, have, have many people connected to that as possible. Um, and that's the main thing that we have been doing so far is just trying to make the resources that aren't available right now, uh, um, clear to everybody of where they can find them. But I've been,
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem. I then wanna add one, one last thing is like Mike said, we are right now having our staff, um, um, all of our business owners to get all their email addresses so we can have a direct line to them. Because in the past, we've actually had their business addresses and their phone numbers. And, sorry, I'll stop now.
Hey, Wally, uh, this is Phil and this would probably be in your, your wellhouse as well, uh, maybe trying to find, uh, maybe the information that's coming down on the stimulus package to maybe add to, uh, the information that we could put out there. And how do we do this? Do we, uh, do we put this out? I know you wanna do social media. Uh, but do you also wanna try to do something, you know, on the radio, newspaper? These are other ways that I think that, uh, other people can be reached.
I, I think that'd be really good. Um, I think that it will, I think if you all pass this, I think we'll have to move pretty quickly on it because we all well, we have about a ten-day window before that hit deadline. Um, so, but yeah, I do think that we should reach out to the papers and the radios as well. And I also just wanted to note that this, this plan that we have here is largely based off of two plans that we bound through the Rhino District and through the city of Denver itself, um, just so you know that we're not just totally coming up with this on our own. We do have a little bit of a blueprint to go off of.
The other thing I was gonna mention and, uh, ask is, ask is that, do you think, do you think that April tenth is a little too quick? That could be, uh, maybe the, I don't know, maybe April the fifteenth would be better, better. I'm not sure what, uh, council's thoughts are. But anyway, does someone else have a question?
I do, Mr. Mayor. It says, uh, applications will be considered immediately. Preference will be given to application received before April tenth, but it's not a true deadline.
Okay.
So I'm thinking, you know, it's, it's not a clear-cut date then, but I just did some quick figures. Two hundred and seventy-six businesses, if we did fifteen hundred, the horse for all of them is four.
It was what?
Hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and I think we're in the ballpark with three hundred thousand.
Could you go ahead and repeat that 'cause you broke up, uh, on my end?
Okay, I'm sorry. I said, I just did a quick check on, we have two hundred and seventy-six businesses in the city. Times fifteen hundred dollars would be our maximum payout. So our maximum, if every business got fifteen hundred, would be four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And I don't believe each business would be eligible for that amount of money. And if you look at the application, it's pretty much self-vetting because it asks for number of employees, your monthly expenses and things like that. So that's, I mean, it's vetting the, the businesses as, as part of the application.
Okay. Okay, let's go on. Mr. Goodall, you have a comment?
I, I, I think all of my questions, uh, have already been answered and, and if I understand right with my conversations with Mike, this could possibly be amount of money that could carry us for a couple of months, not just for one month.
Okay, okay. Mr. Williamson?
No, it's correct. That was kind of our hope that we could, uh, we could carry, um, a couple of months and, and spread this out, but, uh, we'll see how many requests we get. And I think Anthony would like to speak next.
Okay, go ahead, Ed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I had a question. Is there a, a SBA resource center, of which I'm unaware?
There's an SBDC center out of Lahana that, uh, is available.
Okay, the reason I suggest that is just before this meeting, I got an email from Ed Francis, who's the CEO of Inbank. You may have forgotten one as well. It seems as though it was separate variety of people. But therein, he identifies himself as a preferred, or Inbank as a preferred SBA lender. And my point is, if not him, and if there's somebody else, that we could be a focus point or a, a funnel, the, the point at the bottom of the funnel. So that all these business owners, then it's gonna be a bureaucratic mess, I would think, to try and fill all these applications and get grants and actually put,
Okay.
Yada, yada, yada. And if a law would be funded through SBA or some knowing person who could serve as a resource to help and facilitate small businesses as they make application from the CARE package that we're getting from the feds, the CARE Act. I guess in what's called CARES Act. If, if we have someone who could be an advocate or a guide, uh, can I touch on this for a second?
Yeah, please.
I would say that, I, I think that what we're doing is gonna mess. I, 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 I understand that, but yeah, my point is in the course of, of what would be on, the five hundred dollars, you know, fifteen hundred dollars somebody may get from the city, that's gonna be a, a bad, a, a, over a massive problem that needs, gonna get the bigger bulk of the help that they need from the CARES Act. And I'm thinking they just need, I, it would be helpful to me as a business owner to go to a reference center so that someone could assist me through. And in the meantime, I'm, I'm getting by with that much the city has offered before the very short term.
Yeah, um, so I, so yes, like the mayor said, there is an SBDC center in Lahana. In addition to that, we do have our own SBDC representative here in Trinidad that does not have an office here, but he is our rep. Uh, and including his email contacts for people that have been trying to reach out to them. Additionally, in your question about how Inbank just sent you that email, I got the same one. Um, I know the way that that works is that the government's, uh, state and federal recognizes that in order to get money from, um, a government entity takes longer than it does from a private entity like a bank. So basically, they've worked with a number of banks to ba- basically say, hey, you all, please give out these loans right now and we will back you up for it.
Okay.
And so, what is that? Good? Yeah, so I, I would just go ahead and with saying that, so yes, we could reach out to Bob Smith, who is our local SBDC, uh, representative, but also I think any of the banks in town are now eligible to be able to offer these loans out themselves. And then they will be the ones in the future working directly with the SBDC to get those funds back.
Very good to know. Thank you. It's just that business owners need to be guided and directed to the appropriate of people to help with that process.
Agreed.
Mr. Williamson?
You know, uh, a lot of my questions have been answered, uh, through this and I also, I know many people have already, but I wanted to take this time to commend, um, staff that have worked on this. It's, uh, well thought out and I appreciate that. Um, I did have a question. It's more of a curiosity on my part than anything else. Um, two questions. Uh, I've heard several times people mention the vetting process. Um, how, who is going to be administering that vetting process and, um, what does that look like? And the second part of it, is any information other than what's requested for on this form, uh, utilized for that vetting process?
Mike, you wanna answer that?
Yeah, so, uh, basically, uh, the team that put this together, uh, will probably be the vetting process that's at the line. Okay. Mentioned, gender. It's been a tough process, uh, this vetting process and, uh, envision us having a Florida council chambers full of piles and trying to sort and, and figure out this process. So, um, part of the vetting isn't going to be, you know, what is on the application, I think to, to your second part, um, the, uh, the application has, uh, the financial questions, uh, how are you impacted, uh, what's your utility bills, um, that, that whole process is our project. I'm looking for that, uh, the number of employees that you've had and now you're down, what's your rent, your mortgage? Um, uh, are you receiving any kind of, uh, financial assistance other than, than this? And then how? So, um, it's gonna be a tough process, but, uh, we hope we can get it done. And I don't know if anybody on the team has anything to add to that.
If I might, because I, I always have comments. We wanna make this as, as fair and, and objective as possible, obviously. And, and these, uh, there are a lot of, uh, you know, each application will have its own unique blend of, uh, circumstances and, and questions that will be raised. But we will make this as ob- as fair as we possibly can and, uh, and, and do everything we can to, to maintain the fairness in the process. I know I'm repeating myself now, but, um, but we will, we will absolutely strive to do that in all things.
Okay.
I, I have a note now about that and all. I'm just, uh, curious as to the process. I did have, um, just, I guess, associated with each, um, application will pro-
Are there be the utility bill, and that would be, is that the case?
Uh, it, it is part of the application process. And, uh, we have even considered, you know, internally, that if you're closed down or you're limited in your, um, operations, you won't be using as much utilities. So we may go back, uh, twelve-month period and take an average to see where that lands also. So, uh, yeah.
Hey, Mike, uh, I just, one question just popped up in my mind. Uh, we are going to have, uh, businesses that, owners that have, of course, residences. And, uh, now, we're going on to tier three next, which is going to be, of course, that's mostly for employees. Um, do you see any problem with that? That they may apply under that employee column to get some, to pay their utility bills at home? And is that a issue?
Um, well, I, that's one we didn't think of, Mayor. But, um, in my mind, as you're talking, I'm thinking, we're doing our best to help your business so that you can maintain, uh, other parts of your life. And hopefully, hopefully, we can get through that. And hopefully, with the stimulus that everybody's going to possibly give, they can, uh, maintain their, their home while we try and keep our business community viable so that, uh, we can keep that going.
Okay. Okay, let's go on to, if there's no other questions on that partic- on that tier.
May I, may I ask a question?
Sure, go right ahead. Go ahead.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Karen.
Did you say Eric? Okay. Um, can we put on the business application that if you're gonna get, you gotta, you can only get one or the other? You can't get both?
Good point.
Right, good idea. Any other questions on, uh?
No, no.
Okay. Let's go on to, uh, tier three, which is the hundred thousand dollars. This tier would be used for employees who may have been laid off or had hours cut. We will be capping these requests at two hundred and fifty dollars. And the idea here is to supplement the applicant's ability, the applicant's utility bill as much as possible, thus helping defray some of the costs while keeping utilities whole. The plan would be to take an average of the past twelve months of utility bills and grant, based on that average, up to two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, Mr. Mate, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Karen?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay. Uh, Frank, I think we've lost...
I have one question.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, does the, does the, does the caveat of, of being in arrears on your chip, utilities, does that, would that disqualify somebody, an individual as well?
I would say so. If they've, if they've not, uh, you know, paid their bill thus far, they're just gonna use this money to probably not pay it anyhow, unless we offset their old bill. So I, that was my concern from the beginning, is that anybody who has been in arrears up to a certain point in time, at the beginning of the month, or whatever, uh, staff decides, I don't think they should be eligible. That's something to consider.
I wouldn't dare interject. We, uh, received, uh, executive orders from the governor for utilities, no disconnects and waving keys and... Um, no turning off for, but, um, most of the arrears are under, uh, an agreement to make payments, uh, within six months to bring their accounts up to snuff. So, um, it will pay, play a factor in the vetting process, so.
Okay. Okay, I just, uh, just wanted to make that note, uh, made, made it known. Uh, Ms. Ogletree?
My only question is, is this just a direct credit on their utility bill? Or are we giving them, um, two hundred and fifty dollars, or as we can? Ash. What, what's the answer? I'm sorry.
Mayor, so we, uh, a credit to, there's, there's two applications for individuals. There's, uh, utility assistance and rental assistance. And we would be intent, uh, do not too deep. You know, straight cash.
That, that's not part of this, though, correct? This is just utility in the tier three.
Uh, you know, I...
Correct?
I'm picturing, but I think the idea is that some, uh, some people like apartment dwellers, et cetera, they don't actually pay their utilities, they're part of their rent. And so, this is just a way for us to meet the demands of those people also need support, but us giving them the utility credit for a uti...
You know, I, I have, I have a question.
Okay, so there's not a, it's not a, a provision for getting rent unless it's part involves your utilities? Is that correct?
Oh, well, there is a provision for rental assistance in there. If, like Wally said, if you're renting an apartment that the landlord pays the utilities, um, we would not be able to give you credit through the utilities, but, uh, through rental assistance. But...
Okay.
Uh, uh, none of this is, is going to be cash payment out to people. It, it's, it's gonna be, uh, through some process.
Okay. That may be just something we need to throw in there to tier three to explain that that's what we're doing, and it's not a cash grant.
Hey, Mike, uh, when you guys put this together, did you, uh, your team give any consideration of putting both the utility assistance application and the rental assistance application together, where they would choose one or the other and make a designation in there somehow, where if, uh, a, an apartment dweller is, uh, their utilities are paid by the landlord? And did you guys give any consideration to that? Was there any thought given to it?
Uh, yes, we did in there. Um, a lot of thought given to that. Um, a lo- a lot of thought given to, um, gift cards. Um, you know, uh, not a Safeway or Walmart or, or, you know, store gift card, but a Visa gift card, so that they could put that money back into the economy. But, um, it, again, this was a tough discussion, um, and we can, we can revisit. But for now, uh, I think we're staying with, uh, rental assistance and utilities.
Okay. Now, on the rental assistance, you asked for a landlord's name, so that money is going to go directly to the landlord, correct?
That's kind of the intent. We don't want to just give, uh, people the money and then them, uh, not use it to, to pay their rent.
That'd be my recommendation, go directly to the landlord. So we would need a landlord's address or a phone number. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Goodall, did you, uh, have any comment on that?
Um, I think all my questions have been answered. I like how it's set up, and I think just, if nothing else, it, uh, I've spotted there, Mike, where it says if your utilities are included in your rent, then rental assistance applies at that point. I, I think that'd be the easiest way to deal with that.
Okay, Mr. Williamson? Mr. Williamson?
Um, I, I don't know, we'll talk to you guys. It's, it seems well thought out, uh, they worked really well on the area. I think, um, this area is gonna be one of the areas that's challenging to, to just, um, the number of people that are likely to need it, and, um, how much money is available. But, uh, I think anything we can do is helpful.
Okay. Uh, Deafra?
I have a thought.
Go ahead.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm a little bit troubled about the idea that people who are behind in their utility payments not being eligible for assistance. And it, in my mind, it seems that someone is struggling, and they are already trying to work through it, and they've got a payment plan set up with the city, and they're trying to make it right. And we just say, Bob, you're arrears, so you're not eligible. We just add to the heavy load that you're already carrying. It seems to me that rather than just have a blanket rule that says if they're behind, they don't get it, that ought to be a criteria allowed for consideration by the committee who's made, you're gonna defend these applications. Who will have access to the utility, uh, accounts of people? They will see what arrangements they've made, what kind of progress they're making. And if someone's got a good faith effort and trying to, to, to do the right thing for the right reasons at the right time, and for us to blanket stomp on them, I don't think is fair.
No.
There are those who probably will try and, and manage the system to their benefit and not pay their utilities, and will do something else stupid with their money. And in that case, I say, no, why would we help you? But I think it, rather than have a blanket rule, it ought to be just something that we allow the, the vetting committee to have consideration over and say, look, you got somebody here who's got three or four kids that haven't been working, and he got behind a couple of months. Why would we want to make his load heavy? Just rock with him a little bit, see if we can help get it through this? That's just my opinion.
No, I, I, I don't have any problem with that. If they're make, if they're, if they're making a good attempt, uh, you know, and it's noticed, I, I think that's fine. I don't have an issue with that at all.
I, I couldn't agree. Be more... Or if they have a payment plan set up, I know this is to go through. If they don't have a payment plan and they're not trying to work with us, I think those are the ones that shouldn't apply to.
I agree. I agree. Okay, any other comments on any of the tiers that, uh, you guys have thought of? We'll kind of open it up. Anybody have any additional thoughts? If not, I guess the, the main thing is, is that anybody that applies and it has in our paperwork that, uh, that a lot of the tracking will be required, and that W nines and ten ninety-nines may be required for them to, uh, turn in at the end of the year when they file their taxes. So that's something that maybe they need to, uh, put out there in big letters that, uh, uh, so that they could see that they're not blindsided with, when they, uh, you know, when they get their ten ninety-nine or their W nines.
That's correct. But, yeah, I'd like to add, um, um, that we, you know, it sounds like everybody's on board with, with our process. We'll tweak it a little bit, but because of the deadline, and, and because we'd like to get this helped out as quickly as possible, we'd like to get this out in the community, emailed out to all our businesses, applications, so that we can, uh, get those early vetted and, uh, have a, um, some kind of an ordinance in front of you as quickly as possible. Uh, one thing that, that I do need to bring up is, uh, the funding mechanism we're talking about is, uh, waiving or suspending the policy the first quarter of the year that, you know, we have for sixty-five percent of the money, sales tax goes to projects, five percent for outside nonprofit, and thirty percent for the ringing.
Yeah, I, yeah, I...
Uh, what we've done here is we project that first quarter.
Yeah, I, I don't have any, I don't have any problem with that, and I'm sure, does anybody, uh, wanna chime in on that? Do you have any concerns about that?
No, it's all over for me.
Okay. Karen?
Thank you. I, I don't.
Okay.
Wherever? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. As, as, just gets publicized, I don't know if it's a cover letter, a newspaper article, I, I just want people to understand that it's, it's been a theme that has risen several times in this conversation, that this is the city of Trinidad making a good faith effort to help everyone through a common crisis that we're all sharing. In no way is this a toilet paper run. And we don't need a bunch of people coming in here grabbing a bunch of things that they don't need and probably don't deserve, just because it's available. This, this is not a big counter cool of toilet paper. Take what you want. It don't work that way.
All right.
I don't know how to make that point, other than I guess I just did.
I'll duly noted. Uh, anybody else have any comments?
Uh, I, I, oh, go ahead, Rusty. I just wanted to say, once again, I can't, uh, say this enough. Mike and staff, uh, great job upon this, putting this together this quick. And it was put together extremely well. You can tell a lot of thought. So kudos to all the staff, and, uh, to you also, Mike.
Uh, the next, uh, the next...
I'll pass that along to, uh...
Uh, yeah, Mike, you know, you might also put, you know, mine in there as...
I, I did have a, a question. Um, I did wanna echo Rusty's thoughts and congratulations. I did have one further question. Just, just to clarify, uh, what is the path forward for this, um, from tonight's discussion to implementation and rollout? I just wanted to be really clear on that for, for myself.
Uh, Audra, are you on, are you on, are you on there? Or Mike, do you wanna answer that question?
So this, this will take, uh, an ordinance to distribute the funds. So the initial, uh, uh, you know, the application by the tenth, I would say that unless we have a special meeting on, uh, twenty-first, I don't know if we can do something by the seventh to put this in ordinance form, so that, cause we have to wait until the eighth. Uh, possibly on the meeting on the seventh, we can put an ordinance. Let's find that we could, uh, put this forward, uh, and then wait the ten days for it to happen. And by then, we should have a good bunch of applications vetted, and we could start, uh, distributing. Unless, Audra, any comments?
I, I was gonna say, I, I, we would like to get this on with a regular meeting agenda on April seventh. I don't wanna be overly optimistic, but I, I think that is our, our plan. And if I could, just while I have the floor, so I don't have to unmute myself again, this has been a Mike Valentine-driven bus. And you're all very nice for, for giving us, uh, kind words, but, but really, Mike, uh, this, this has been a huge undertaking, and, uh, and, and Mike has been slanderous a little bit. This was all driven by Mike, and, and I can't say how important his leadership was during all of this. And I, I know that all the staff, if they could talk right now, they would say the same thing. So, well done, Michael. That's all I have.
Uh, and from my end, I wanted to say, uh, you know, thank you for all the work that you guys have done. Uh, we put it on you really quick. You guys came up with an answer. It shows you what kind of a staff that we have. Uh, just can't say enough about all the entire staff that did, you know, worked on this. And besides that, I just wanted to say congratulations to council for, you know, taking this upon ourselves to take a look, to see the needs of our community. And, uh, we are very fortunate that we are able to utilize, uh, you know, some of these proceeds that we have through the marijuana funds. We're very fortunate to have this. So, uh, I wanna thank, uh, council for, uh, all your cooperation and work that you guys have, and thought that you guys have put into this as well. The next thing I wanted to say is, uh, Mike had put this on, that there was outside agency funding for that fourth quarter. And Mike, are, is that something you're going to bring forward at our regular meeting next week?
Uh, well, Mayor, I just put that out there because we had, uh, uh, eight applications. We had a request of, uh, hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars for sixty-nine thousand dollars worth of money. So I will be getting, you know, those applications on the drive for us to, to also, uh, have council take a look at and vet also, and how we distribute those funds.
Okay. So just for anybody that is, uh, listening tonight, or will be listening on YouTube, uh, what we are looking to authorize is... uh, what we are looking to authorize is, uh, roughly five hundred thousand dollars for, from the marijuana first quarter funds. Uh, just wanted, so that anybody who's listening can, uh, understand where this money's coming from, and it is coming from the marijuana funds. So I want to say thank you, guys, for tonight's, uh, work session. Uh, very well worth it. And, uh, good night, and, uh, hopefully have a good night's sleep. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, I can-
Night, everybody.